You're watching Access to Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is November 17th, Special Meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www Eckus Laporte County dot org.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council, November 17th. Let's stand for the pleasure of the ladies. I pledge allegiance to my United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Okay, roll call, very good. John. John. John Hope. Here. Mike Johnson. Here. Okay, I have no opening comments. First agenda item is the SCBA, that's the air compressor for the water department, no, fire department. Did we get feedback on that?
Did we jump?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do we get any feedback from the SCBA?
My compressor is going to give us some.
Okay, so I've tried to.
Oh, here, Michael.
Thank you. Forgot about that. I've tried to get some more done and I wasn't successful, other than to tell you that we did call a, so there's actually three components, if you can imagine. There's the compressor itself, which you would assume would have the most value. There are big tanks that we use on the ground. We had to replace those with higher pressure tanks. They're kind of like, if you've ever been on a construction site, they're the big ones that you weld with. And then there are some of those. And then there are the old SCBA tanks, which are the ones that we throw on our backs. The SCBA tanks have absolutely no value because they're, you cannot reuse them once they get to this point and they're not NPD compliant because the air packs themselves are not. So those are just junk. I just found out today from the welding supply office that those tanks are so old, they're no longer made, and you can't use them for things like construction gases. So they essentially have no value. The compressor is the last item that may or may not have some value. I have not been able to confirm with Kurt, who if you recall, I felt a little embarrassed at the last meeting. Kurt was in there and he said to me that that number that I had in my head, that was supposed to be the salvage value of the ground tanks, the big ones I just mentioned, and the compressor together, were somewhere near seventy-nine hundred dollars. And then he said, basically said, well, wait a minute, we're not really sure. So I don't think that value approaches that number anymore because what I found out about the tanks today. So we're likely down somewhere between, you know, a grand or so. I've since had some conversation with Chris and do you want, is it time for you to enlighten us a little bit?
Chairman, since that meeting, there is a statute or a provision in town to give that equipment to yourself, either way, with grabs as well, to your volunteer fire department. So one way around this, because I also tried to communicate with Kurt to see if he's got nothing. So nobody will put in, remind him he hasn't heard back from him. He even reached out to see if Michigan City Fire Department would be interested in why I get an agenda. That, no response. So you do have the ability to give it and maybe if you were in the law, just to move this thing forward, put a copy out there that whatever they spend gets earmarked towards, you know, outfitting their trucks or whatever that is, so that it's not money off on the town, it's not being given by, but if they're able to redevelop it, their value determined that it gets applied. But mostly work from your perspective, because we had some discussions of whether we have to determine the surplus or things like, what's there to send into a vehicle, it's going down off the fire department. You do not, you would be able to give that any more than over, because right now it's only by the town, then the town and the fire department can dispose of it.
So I guess if you guys are willing to go that direction, as we mentioned at that last town council meeting, our dilemma is where if you've been over there, it's like a sardine can with a few too many sardines in it. And we have this, this equipment, this surplus equipment, we need to get rid of it as soon as we can because our current rescue vehicle is actually sitting out on the pad and you know what that means. So if you saw it clear to say, to along the lines of what Chris suggested, then you guys would essentially give it to the fire department. We would dispose of it and give you the receipt of whatever that those dollars consisted of at the point, but we were able to salvage any of it. We may still get a little money for the compressor. I know we're not going to get any money for the SCBA tanks or the air packs and we may get a little bit of money for the compressor.
Can they use them if we donate them? Can they still use them?
The only thing that would be usable right now, from a practical standpoint, the compressor itself is usable. There's nothing wrong with the compressor, it's old, but it's usable. That's a big box, you know, the big blue box in there. The ground tanks, if somebody was going to use them for breathing air, which is kind of a unique situation, in other words, fire departments are pretty much, or diving, which is the other place that they could be, potentially be used. So if we were able to find like another department that would be interested in paying us right now, we haven't been able to find it, it will last me for five months. So that's, that's, those are the only two useful things, basically.
Okay. And so they have no need for the compressor?
The only people that need it are somebody with a dive team or another fire department. We would not succeed. We've been trying to get it to another fire, we were talking about even if the town is unable to donate it to another fire department, we've not been able to do that.
Because we have another compressor?
Yeah, we have a brand new one. So when we went from forty-five-hundred-pound system to six-thousand-pound system, everything has to be updated. The tanks on the truck, the tanks on the ground, the SCBA units and the compressor. So we ought to, thankfully, you both were able to see fit to cough up for the compressor and we got a grant for the tanks and the SCBA. So that's where we stand. I think that's a better way to do it because then we can hurry up and get it out of our hair and we can report back to you about, and we're not talking about that number that we were bad around the other day. We'll be lucky if we get a grant for this stuff, I think. Now, if you choose, if you direct us not to give it to Michigan City, I can understand that and we won't do that if that's the feeling for the, for the council. So, but we would try to get some salvage out of it somewhere.
I would make a motion to give it to the fire department, volunteer fire department, let them dispose of it as they will. I wouldn't want to make any restriction on where they sell it or give it to. I don't want to blame the fire department for the common council's lack of whatever. So that's my.
I second that.
Any other discussion?
One before you vote, just making it clear that John's on duty himself because of his connections on the fire department.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. I think that is unanimous. Okay, police donation account.
Thank you, guys.
Police. Okay. Fair for me, I'd like to take a few moments first before getting into my explanation to kind of touch on donation accounts across the nation as they relate to not only police departments but fire departments, emergency police responders. Communities across the country, they're very generous and they're very generous in support of the emergency responders and therefore they make in-kind donations to the police and fire departments. There's no different than what has occurred here in the town of Long Beach. I would like to now give you a explanation as to the Long Beach Police Department's donation account. Prior to a banking account being established, donations to the Long Beach Police Department were kept as cash in the banker's bag in the chief marshal's office. This practice dates back to nineteen ninety and more than likely years before that. After SBOA state board account, already viewed in either two thousand nine or twenty-ten, then the chief marshal was advised to set up a debit account for purposes of already the deposits and expenditures. Andrew Kirk's office at the time was aware of the account settlement. Horizon Bank, the checking slash debit account was opened on August third, twenty-ten, by the then-chief marshal and the lieutenant, which were the then-chief deputy. Both were issued debit cards for the account. The funds were used for miscellaneous expenses for the department, community outreach, food for various events, employee appreciation, dinner, training and other expenditures. I was able to locate the original Horizon Bank documents from when the account was opened in twenty-ten. And only a handful of receipts from previous years were remaining in the file folder, as I do not believe there was good record keeping at the time. Twenty-nineteen, the then-chief deputy marshal was preparing to retire and the individual that was promoted to sergeant, then was taken to Horizon Bank, was issued a debit card. The retirement individual had her name removed from the account and the signature card was updated at Horizon Bank. Twenty-twenty-one, the then-chief marshal was preparing for retirement and I was beginning the transitional period for the first week of January twenty-twenty-one. The then-chief marshal spent about a week with me, takes me to Horizon Bank, updates the account signature card, and I then issued a debit card for that particular account. And then only two individuals remain in that account, myself, Kim and the chief deputy. January seventh, twenty-twenty-one, I locate ninety-one dollars of cash in the banker's bag in the chief marshal's office. I then directed the chief deputy marshal at the time to deposit the ninety-one dollars of cash into the town's police donation account at Horizon Bank, as no cash should be kept in the chief marshal's office. And that was a practice that I started when I was hired here in January fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Therefore, the account balance in January twenty-twenty-one was eighteen hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents after the ninety-one dollars was deposited. January of twenty-twenty-one, the current, I have maintained and I have deposit slips, annual invoices and receipts for any and all transactions that have occurred out of this account. In May of this year, a newly appointed clerk treasurer had asked to be added to the monthly statements at Horizon Bank, at which time I had sent the amount today's coming here, granting a request asking that our clerk treasurer be added to the monthly statements at Horizon Bank. After last week, and this is an on-the-go point that we have, last week after a budget finance meeting, there was a discussion that had came about in reference to police donation account. So in my short tenure here, I began to do a little bit of digging into the account, not being too familiar about the setup and the history of the account. I then began to research the account. I then reached out and spoke with Michael Crowley at the state board accounts. And he confirms that donation funds that are received here at the Long Beach Police Department should be maintained within the town bank accounts and that our clerk treasurer is responsible for the monthly reconciliation of the bank's statements. Expenditures from said account. The SBOA explained that all expenditures should go through our internal control procedure. All claims are to be authorized by the town council. Funds shall be kept in a specific donation line item for the police department and all transactions should be processed through the clerk's office, as all other purchases are for our town. So before I get into the corrective action plan, I took a deep look at everything that we had previously before my arrival, the continued practice from previous years, and I now have a place of corrective action standing before. Effective this morning, first day of November seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, at nine a.m., I went to Horizon Bank and I closed out Horizon Bank account eight-seven-seven-one-zero-six-nine. The funds that were in this account are two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. A bank cashier's check was issued in that amount. I have that here today and will be asking that we direct those funds, that particular check be deposited by our clerk treasurer into the appropriate town account as authorized by his office. Any future donations received from our businesses or residents to the Long Beach Police Department shall be provided to the clerk treasurer office for deposit into the police donation account. Any and all expenditures to be paid for this particular account shall go through the internal control process within the clerk's office and will appear on the monthly check registry for approval by the town council at the regular monthly town council meeting. The clerk's office will conduct monthly reconciliations of the account balance and will maintain all invoices, receipts and any and all expenditures. Also today, as I turn over the check that was issued from Horizon Bank, there is also with the, with the check, there is original documentation when the account was set up in August of twenty-twenty, or sorry, twenty-ten. There are bank statements sent my hiring here at the town in January of twenty-twenty-one. All bank statements are accounted for and present in there to November of twenty-twenty-two. In addition, under the corrective action plan, I would respectfully request that the town council ask for town attorney to draft an ordinance that specifically outlines the deposits of donation funds and will approve use and expenditures of these funds, similar to what other cities and towns do in the immediate area. In my previous employment, and I've got an example here for you today, under ordinance number four-four-four-three, this creates a ordinance under municipal code for the city of Michigan City, this is their donation account that I use as an example. And you can find this on the municipal code on the internet, this is where I had cut and pasteed this from, it's known. They have established a donation account for the police department, the fire department and the tree board. Specifically under section two, they expose a subject for police department donation funds, says that it's hereby established a police department donation fund. This fund shall be restricted, non-reverting fund. The purpose of this fund shall be for the receipt of money for fund donations, fundraisers and other sources. And said money shall be used by the police department for expenditures directly related to funding purposes. Purchase of equipment, improvements of police department facilities owned by the city, materials and supplies for use in the operation of police, education of the public regarding crime prevention, police related matters, including promotional, educational, training supplies and community events. Training and educational activities, community outreach initiatives, which include, but not limited to events such as shop with a cop, Easter egg hunt, et cetera. The purchase of food, drink and other virtual items for meetings, events, celebrations and other specific fundraising campaigns for the police department. Police department shall not use these funds in its donation fund for any other purposes than stated herein, and such funds shall be administered by the controller's office, which is similar to our clerk treasurer office here in our town. Donations that the Long Beach Police Department has received in recent months and in the time I've been here, we generally receive donations with no specific intended purpose. I recently had an individual resident came in, handed over a two-hundred-dollar check and said, I'd like to buy your officer's lunch. I never took him up on the offer, I just put the two-hundred dollars in the donation account, the deposits there, but I didn't go out and individually buy lunch. But over time, in the last almost two years, I've purchased pizzas for our reserve deputy unit, which is volunteer unit. We do not pay them for their nightly meetings and returning sessions. We go next door and we spend forty, fifty dollars on pizzas. We feed the entire group. They were happy, they never left the training session to have a dinner break and then threw them out for training. Many individuals that come in, they ask to use this funds to support your officers, do something nice for our brave emergency responders, buy your staff for lunch, support community outreach events, support our volunteer reserve deputies. And most recently, we received a generous ten-thousand-dollar donation to purchase of a new ATV unit. But that particular check we have already turned over to the clerk treasurer's office and have been deposited. So that is not within what we're speaking of today. In summary, the donations we have received are not specifically designated to one particular event or purpose. Residents just wish to show their appreciation for all of our efforts. I can tell you one of the most recent expenditures from that account, I'll chuck a treat of that, that we partnered with the Long Beach Fire Department. We went out and purchased ninety-eight dollars in donuts from House Cardig. The children thought it was quite comical that police officers were handing out donuts for Halloween to the trick-treaters. And I have the receipt to back that up, that ninety-eight dollars in donuts were spent and I'm sure we got some Facebook photos out there that support us giving out those donuts as well. I can assure this council that the funds that are in that account will burn that account a long time, will not use for personal gain, not use for purchase alcohol, they're not used for charity purposes and they're not used for entertainment purposes. They're solely for supporting our community outreach within our community, supporting our staff, our officers. The water that you had before today for this meeting is purchased out of that particular account from Walmart here locally in Michigan City. So my purpose of this and coming forward with this is to recognize that we have some deficiencies in how the account was set up. We need to take corrective action to make sure that moving forward, that we are doing this in a proper manner with full transparency to the community that we serve. So I would ask that the council direct our attorney to work with me to draft a ordinance to have a four-year December meeting that is similar to what other communities around us have done and is obviously approved by the state board of the council, otherwise they wouldn't have the ordinance on the books to substantiate such. And then within that particular ordinance, I would just ask that, possible for consideration, a discretionary amount, either two-hundred-fifty dollars or five-hundred dollars, that I wouldn't have to come to the council for every small expenditure, but maybe if something exceeds five-hundred dollars and obviously I would come before you in a regular public meeting, I would then propose the expenditure to you, asking for permission to proceed with the expenditure. Again, I sincerely apologize for my deficiency in catching this earlier and not bringing it to the attention of everyone. I appreciate our clerk treasurer for bringing it to my attention and I guess I hope that this corrective action plan is acceptable at all. If not, I am prepared to answer any questions today. And just a clarification, who has the authorization to withdraw away from that account? Currently, myself and Sergeant Schooly. But as of this morning, when the account was closed at Horizon Bank, Horizon Bank had me surrender over both of the debit cards that we previously had. So my debit card, Sergeant Schooly's debit card were turned in this morning. There were a couple of scissors in front of me, they were then placed into a shredder. The account was closed. Clerk Perry now has the remaining funds, the two thousand four hundred and some odd dollars in the rest of that check be deposited. And if we could direct the clerk treasurer's office to establish a line item separate within itself, within one of our town accounts, for police donation funds. And then maybe also move the earlier ten-thousand-dollar donation check for the ATV to that account. Because at some point, I will be approaching the council to spend that ten-thousand dollars to purchase a new ATV, more than likely in twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so are you going to presume that's on our rest and draw going forward?
No, going forward, it would be our clerk treasurer would have full authorization of the account, supervision of the account.
I understand that it is unauthorized.
Authorized. Case for purchase, I'm sorry, I missed, I said, yes, the purchases coming out of the account, that's why I'm asking for the discretionary amount up to say five-hundred dollars. I would authorize anything over five-hundred dollars would be full council approval. And then we would ask that all that be put into the ordinance so that we have that on the books for any art review in the future.
Thank you.
So I would make a motion to ask our town attorney to draft an ordinance similar to Michigan City's ordinance number forty-four-four-three, with what you said as far as the authorization to withdraw.
The only addition I would make, so if you had debit cards and you no longer have debit cards, then you're not going to have easy access to this five-hundred-dollar limit that we're putting on it without something like that, can we, or is it okay?
I would use a town's credit card. I have authorization on town's credit card, I've got five-thousand-dollar limit, so I'm responsible for purchases on that credit card, so I would use that. And then any other statement with two-hundred-dollar expenditure on there, I would then email clerk's office, asking them that when the credit card statement comes due at the end of the month, that particular expenditure come out of the donation account. I know earlier clerk Perry had indicated that he had some communication from SBOA that he may want to share with us. Can I answer any questions related to that?
Now, there's a lot of, basically, there's a lot of that, that most of the points that you brought up, Chief, that I distributed a lot of while I was following.
I just want to make sure again, and I think I put it in earlier, an email a week ago too, my ultimate goal here is, again, not to bring embarrassment, mainly to the town, second to myself, and to be full transparent with all of you. Like I said, I shouldn't caught this some time ago, but I'm still diving into a lot of things that need to be looked at in my behalf and I'll continue to do a good job for you.
And glad you have second money in your office.
Ninety-one dollars.
That's the first thing. Who made the other ones?
For the motion to the second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next agenda, salary ordinance. We haven't seen that. We've had plenty of discussion about it. I think it's been amended at the last meeting. Anybody have any questions about it? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we need to discuss clerk treasurer's salary before we approve the salary ordinance in the event that the clerk treasurer's salary is adjusted?
We could do that. Want to do that?
I mean.
I guess that probably does make some sense. Okay, so clerk treasurer's salary, anybody's aware of the issues, I think?
Yeah, I've looked at it and we're below average, that's for sure. And I'd suggest we take what the current salary is and what the average salary is, add those together and divide it by two. That would get the salary still below average, but forty-four thousand nine twenty-three, that'd be my suggestion.
We did prefer that budget for twenty-twenty-three, I mean, I turned on fifty thousand, the budget was approved by the town council and adopted by the state. So our recommendation would be to make it seven fifty thousand dollars. That would still be below the average, but it would be on the line.
Well, while the town of Long Beach has wanted to pay at the higher end of the regional salary range, opt to retain qualified employees. I don't believe this clerk is qualified and will pose any increase. So I'll entertain a motion on that. Somebody want to make a motion?
Just to clarify, you have a motion, right? I don't know if you made, and I just wonder how you also did this. It's a work, I guess, if you need time to figure out what those averages are, if you don't have it, if you have to just have this app by the end of the year, but if you do it this year, you'll, you'll know if you exceeded what you've done in the last couple or I have to amend them, right? So you do have the ability, if you're not prepared today, or if you can move forward, also have to be able to discuss.
So John, is that a motion?
Well, that'd be my suggestion, and I could put it into a motion.
Go ahead.
That we put the salary at forty-four nine two three.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, let's do a, all favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Two. All right, so then, all opposed? Okay, so I'll entertain another motion.
I would make a motion that we bring compensation to the fifty thousand dollar level.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Did you want to raise your hand?
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did.
I'm done.
I'll make a motion that we leave the salary where it is. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Does anybody else want to make a motion?
Yes. I guess the issue I shall be is to make a motion to bring a cap station, forty-eight thousand dollars.
And that's from present thirty-four, right?
Correct.
Thirty-six. Is this correct? This thirty-six four?
Yes, it was current.
Yeah. Somebody said from thirty-four, it's not thirty-four right now.
Thirty-four six, right.
Well, it says thirty-six four, I always write.
Thirty-six four, okay. So we have a motion to go to what?
For you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All favor, say, or raise your hand? All opposed?
John.
I'll entertain another motion. If we have another motion, I would make a motion to table. We have a meeting next month. If we did decide to change the salary, it would come in before the deadline of January first. So I'll make a motion to table. Is there a second?
I second it.
All favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Passes three to two. All right, it's tabled. I don't have any other agenda items.
So we got to do the salary remuneration.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot, okay. So salary orders, everybody has it, problem, everybody's looked at it.
Time on now, can we pass the salary orders without finishing the court's salary?
Yeah, we can just motion to table.
I know that.
Yeah, are you worth it?
We have to.
Sure, you can consider that.
Yeah, we have to.
We're going to just say that it's potentially right, so.
So the other option would be to table this till the next meeting?
Well, my only comment would be, it doesn't seem to make sense to me to pass the salary ordinance when we think we may entertain a change to it a month from now. I, I'm confused, is that?
I think that would be a reason to table this till next meeting?
I agree.
You want to second that?
I'll second it.
All favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All opposed, okay.
Senator John, you're opposed.
Yeah.
All right, I have no other agenda items. Anybody else? Public comments?
Oh, we both, I saw, she's...
Good afternoon, we made donations $2,300 to our land. I saw the donuts, they didn't beat the dogs. They were lovely, well decorated donuts. Thank you very much. This council or select people plan to throw out apples and apples and apples and oranges and we were looking for salaries for different people. We come up with 17 numbers and then we combine everything and divide it by 17. We don't have titles, we don't say part-time, we don't say full-time, we don't say benefits, we don't talk about support staff. And just today, it was, we take a low ones or, you know, a current salary and then we take an average salary and then we divide it by two. And we don't talk about whether this is a full-time job or a part-time job. We don't talk about the odd checks or NSF. Why somebody can't look at a computer before 10 o'clock in the morning and not 2 o'clock in the afternoon for zero checks or four checks. We don't talk about how much is paid for insurance. What is the cost to the town of the insurance for the clerk treasurer and his family? It's my understanding and I may be wrong. We don't talk about how many staff that we brought in to support the clerk treasurer. We don't talk about, we don't talk about Dick McNamee, who I understand is not paid. We don't talk about Carl Senna, about Trista,